All right, I think we're about ready to get going. Ally, are we about ready to go? Okay. So hello and welcome back to the April 17th, 2018 City Council Regular Meeting. The council's completed an executive session and will now move on to special business. We have two items of special business this evening. The first is our special recognition of Representative Tana Sen from Mercer Island, our own islander here, for her leadership on home visiting from Fight Crime Invest Kids. And for this presentation, we have Ed Holmes, our police chief.
All right, thank you. And if I could get Representative Sen up here with me, I'd appreciate that. And so again, for the record, my name is Ed Holmes, your police chief. And I'm here tonight as a member of Fight Crime Invest in Kids. It's a group of nearly 200 police chiefs, sheriffs, and prosecutors in Washington State who we all believe in that the best way to reduce crime is to invest in proven prevention programs. Research shows that high school dropouts are far more likely to end up in prison than those with high school diplomas. And one of the most effective ways to keep kids in school is to give them a strong start early in life. Representative Sen serves as vice chair of the House Early Learning and Human Services Committee and a member of the Appropriations Committee. In these roles, she's placed or played a significant part in advocating policies and investments that will result in positive outcomes for children and youth. I'm honored to present Representative Sen with Fight Crime Invest in Kids 2018 Champion for Children Youth Award. This award is given in recognition of Representative Sen's strong commitment to children and to youth this past legislative session. In particular, we want to represent or want to recognize Representative Sen's role in digging deep into children's mental health, keeping this issue in the forefront, and directing needed resources to proven solutions. Fight Crime Invest in Kids is also thankful for Representative Sen's leadership in securing a 40% increase in state funding for home visiting. Home visits help parents develop basic parenting skills and have been shown to reduce incidence of child abuse and child neglect. Please join me in thanking Representative Sen for her work on behalf of the children and families of our community statewide. Representative Sen. And our photographer here is the director for Washington State of Fight Crime Invest in Kids, Eric.
Do we need a picture with the three of you?
Thank you.
So as I mentioned, tonight, we actually have two items of special business. And the next one is AV 5415 Volunteer Appreciation Week Proclamation. Youth and Family Services Director Cindy Goodwin.
Good evening, members of the council and community residents. This month, April, is Volunteer Appreciation Month. And it began as Volunteer Appreciation Week back in 1971, and later in 1991 became Volunteer Appreciation Month. And it's a time that communities across the United States take time to honor the volunteers in their community who give so much in time and talent. So tonight, we are going to bring up with us five volunteers. If I can have John and John and all the other volunteers join me up here. I'm going to say just a bit about each of these five volunteers. They are really the volunteer, they're tip of the volunteer iceberg in our community. We have over 300 volunteers that are active with different departments. We have 700 that are registered to help out with emergency management. And they're people that give to the police department, they give to the Youth and Family Services Department, Parks and Rec Department, they help out with the thrift shop in a multitude of ways that the city. So they have really offered us a lot. So we have Julie Gardner with Emergency Management. Hi, Julie. And Julie began working with Jennifer with the police department. She works, she does all the badges, she does a lot of data entry. She's worked with Emergency Management for seven years, and she's recently started with restoration in the Parks Department, really an avid volunteer. Thank you, Julie. We have John Holm from the thrift shop. John's here. John began working with the thrift shop last year. He is getting a degree in accounting at Bellevue Community, at Bellevue College, and he wanted some experience. And so he began doing cashier shifts. From there, he's helped in the office administratively. He keeps track of our data. He does cash reports, a host of things that allows the staff to do other projects. And he's taken on many, many suggestions, and he fills them when we need him. And it is a great asset to the thrift shop. So that's John. We have Lynn Myers with the Parks Department. And Lynn has volunteered and been on Mercer Island for 53 years, and she's now in her 80s. This is a volunteer. She's active with Parks and Recreation for 27 years. She's volunteered in varying capacities from the Ivy Brigade, pulling ivy off of trees, fundraising for senior programs, and she was at the welcome desk at the old community center. She continues to be involved with senior programs, with Amber, does everything from volunteering at Senior Social, setting up appointments for the foot care clinic, and doing meals-on-wheels delivery. And she enjoys the conversation, and she's willing to help out whenever it's needed. It's kind of a theme with people here, is that they're willing to help out whenever they get asked. We have Rosella Looney. Where is Rosella? We have, Rosella Looney volunteers with Mercer Island Youth and Family Services. She came in with her daughter first to work in the food pantry, restocking, restocking from downstairs, and then when her, I guess her daughters moved on. But Rosella continues to work with us, and when we were looking for people at the front desk, we asked her, and we were thrilled that she said yes. She steps up there, and she's there at least once a week, and really an asset to all of us. And then we have John Bondi. And John Bondi is a volunteer for the Mercer Island Parks and Recreation, yeah, the Parks and Recreation Department. He volunteers five to 10 hours a month at Wildwood Park, which is located at 86 Southeast down the south end of the island. He was a neglected open space, but about 15 years ago, a park neighbor brought people together, friends of Wildwood Park, and organized regular work parties. She handed off that responsibility to John about five years ago, and he's collaborated with the Parks Department to make a successful park and dog run that many, many people enjoy. So these are incredible volunteers. He, I just want to say that what's written here is John said that next to his family and his career in medicine, that Wildwood has been his next love. Anyway.
Mayor Bertland. Well, this is indeed a special moment, because I think everybody would agree that volunteers are one of the best aspects that we have here in this community. They touch all island lives in so many different ways, and these are a great example. The other thing I have to mention is Mr. Bondi was my neighbor when I grew up. And Wildwood Park was, in fact, unkept, to say the least, and some great memories there. But equally, going and visiting it now, it's amazing to see what a little bit of volunteer work and some great neighborly activity can do. So with that, the proclamation reads, "Whereas Volunteer Appreciation Month was organized in 1974 to recognize and celebrate the efforts of volunteers and to urge people to get out and volunteer in their communities; and whereas every April, communities and charities reinforce the theme of celebrating people in action by recognizing volunteers and fostering a culture of service; and whereas the entire community can inspire, equip, and mobilize people to take action that changes the world; and whereas our country's volunteer force of more than 62 million is a great treasure that is vital to our future as a caring and productive nation; and whereas volunteering provides social and physical health benefits to volunteer as well as the community, and the giving of oneself in service to another empowers the giver and recipient; and whereas experience teaches us that government by itself cannot solve all our nation's social problems; and whereas 289 Mercer Island residents volunteer to provide over 10,000 hours of service to the city's advisory boards and commissions, the emergency management program, the Departments of Parks and Recreation and Youth and Family Services, and the Mercer Island thrift store; and I, now therefore, Debbie Bertland, Mayor of the City of Mercer Island, do hereby proclaim April 2018 as Volunteer Appreciation Month in the City of Mercer Island. And I encourage all residents and businesses to recognize and thanks the hundreds of island residents who contribute to the betterment of our community. The city invites volunteers who work with the city department to join us in celebration of your contributions on Monday, May 14th, from 4:30 to 6:00 at the Community and Event Center, approved the 17th day of April 2018." We have a signed copy for each of you to take home and/or share with your fellow volunteers. And for that, I'd like to welcome City Manager Julie Underwood.
Good evening, council. Just a few items to update you on. Soon, we will administer the Citizen Satisfaction Survey, our survey that we administer every other year. This is different from in the past. In the past, we've done a more or less a phone survey, about a 10-minute phone survey. This time, we are sending actual paper surveys. They will go out to 2,000 randomly selected households. Our target is to receive 400 responses back, and that gives us about a 95% confidence level. Participants can return mail the survey, they can phone it in, they can also go online and complete the survey. I urge our residents who receive a survey to please complete it as soon as possible, and results will be presented to the council on May 14th. So you'll see an envelope that looks like this. Don't throw it away. Take, it'll probably take about 10 to 15 minutes to complete, and we need your input. It really helps us identify what our satisfaction, dissatisfaction, and what our priorities should be. So please, please, complete that.
Sorry, Tom, you have a question?
Yes, sir.
I just want to make sure I understand that the survey is going to the household, so it'll say current resident, not to Tom.
That's right. Thank you for, yes, that's right. So it'll say resident of that address. And I should mention, it is a scientific survey. It's meant to be a representative sample of our community. So, okay. We have a volunteer restoration event. In fact, we have one happening at Wildwood Park this coming weekend. It's Saturday at 9:00 a.m. Volunteers are urged to meet at the West Entrance on 86th Avenue Southeast. And of course, if you'd like more information, please email johnbondi@wildwoodpark.comcast.net. Another event is happening at Secret Park, and that's at 10:00 a.m. Meet by the Playground on the corner of Southeast 27th Street and 64th Avenue. The UW Restoration Ecology Network students are actually hosting this. And if you'd like more information, contact Kim Frappier at mercergov.org. I want to call your attention to the third year in a row that the Carfax Girl Forward Award is available for, and you can get information through the Mercer Island Youth and Family Services. This is available for an island girl or a woman age 16 and older who are planning their advanced academic or vocational education. The award of 1,000 to 2,000 will help a diverse group of women and girls who demonstrate a positive attitude and strong commitment to learning get a solid start in their careers by financing tuition, books, or housing. All applicants must be female, a resident of Mercer Island, and enrolled in either a vocational or academic program. And for more information, please reach out to Cheryl Manriquez at the Youth and Family Services. And she can be reached at 206-275-7869. The deadline for-
69 or 63?
Is it 6? Oh, sorry. It's 69. That's a typo. I'm sure on our website it's correct. All materials must be submitted by 5:00 p.m. Monday, May 14th. If you haven't signed up for the city's emergency alerting system, I urge all of you to do that. It's a free service. We're doing this in partnership with King County, so what you're able to do is just register, go online. It's free, it's confidential. And in a major, significant emergency, you will receive an alert, whether it's by telephone, text, or email. And so you never know when an emergency might happen. This is a great way for you to stay connected. The Mercer Island Preschool Association, I thought it would be nice to at least recognize this event, because as you know, they really do reinvest back in our own community. So this fun event is happening on Saturday, April 21st, at 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the Mercer Island High School, and the fee is $15 per child, 10 for a MIPA member. And they're offering $5 pony rides, and of course, adults are free. Activities for ages two and eight. Children can enjoy pony rides, of course, live music, performers, face painting, Petey Zoo. There'll be a variety of food tricks available, such as Delfino's Pizza, the Ultimate Melt, buns, nibbles, secret donuts. I might just go for that, actually. So please attend this great event. More information at mi preschoolassociation.org.
There's actually another special opportunity at the circus.
Ooh, what's the opportunity?
And that is Councilmember Wong, no, Councilmember Wong will be in the dunk tank.
Oh.
From what time to what time?
Yep.
The time hasn't been set yet. And I only get dunked if you actually hit the target.
But they heat the water now, so.
That's great. That's great. For a good cause, Councilmember Wong. Okay, really excited that next week, we launch our ride-share pilot. So as you recall, this is a six-month pilot that you approved with Lyft and Uber. It starts April 23rd, it ends on October 31st, 24 hours a day, Monday through Friday. Flat fee for $2 per ride, and then starting on the fourth month, that goes to $2 per shared ride, and then $5 per solo ride. All rides must start and finish at the Mercer Island Park and Ride, and you cannot leave the island. So one of the things we've done, of course, is really try to promote and push out and really market this great new program to our residents. We'll have A-boards available, posters. We've of course used social media. We've gotten a lot of great earned media, the Seattle Times, Como TV. It's been great to, and of course, I'm sure there's still probably a resident out there that doesn't know it's happening. So I urge all of you to ask your neighbor, "Do you know we're starting a pilot?", and make sure they sign up. So it's pretty easy to do, easy to download the app. We'll have all this information available on the city's website. And that's all I have.
Great, and thank you. So next on our agenda is appearances, and this is the opportunity for anyone to speak to the council on any item. When it is your turn to address the council, please be sure to speak audibly into the microphone. State your name and address for the record, and please limit your comments to three minutes. The other basic request is please be, stick to the issues and be friendly. Is there anybody who wishes to address council? And with that, I'm going to encourage anybody who is here to allow our special high school guest, Katie Brodsky, to speak first, so that she can get back to her high school activities. Katie, come to the podium.
Hello, I'm Katie Brodsky. I live Mercer Island, 8921 Southeast 47th Street. My name is Katie Brodsky, and I'm a senior class officer at Mercer Island High School. And I have made it my priority to serve not only the senior class, but the student body as a whole. As the entire school is well aware, there's a huge lack of parking for students. Our school has a total of six parking lots and are only four designated to students. Among those four parking lots, one of them contains around five parking spots, and another contains around 10. There are only two sufficient lots that are available to upperclassmen who have to pay $75 a semester. With over 700 upperclassmen in our school, there needs to be more parking provided. For students who have the inability to pay for this, it forces them to park on the only street available, which creates inequality within our school. With our school's mission to construct an atmosphere with equality, we need open street parking to move us in the right direction. When I got my license sophomore year, I was ready to drive to school, but parking was an apparent problem. Seniors are granted parking in the lots if they pay, so I was forced to park on the long street by St. Monica's, often referred to as the Strip. But luckily, I have a friend who had allowed me to park in her driveway. Unfortunately, most people at this school do not have this luxury. Rather than having assigned parking, underclassmen have to park on the Strip, which is far away from the school and holds limited spots. This poses many problems, including students who need to leave during the day for running start or private classes will no longer have parking when they come back. As well as students who live off-island are forced to take long bus rides because they are not guaranteed parking on the Strip. Oftentimes, parents cannot drive students to school due to distance or work schedules, making students take longer bus rides, compromising their time. And students who have after-school tutoring activities or sports need transportation to and from the high school after their commitment when buses have already left the school. So many students need to drive to school due to after-school activities, so rather than increased bus activity, we should open up street parking for students. As you can see, this affects a different, a ton of different types of students, which is why I've started a petition and received 597 signatures from students and parents that support the action to remove the "No Parking During School Hours" signs on the streets. Next year, I will be off at college, but I hope that MIHS students will receive open street parking. If you can remove the street signs, it would provide more parking, less traffic, and a result in equality and justice for us students. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Because Katie is here, and she's representing such a significant number of high school students, the city manager and I had a discussion and thought it would be helpful if Julie went ahead and responded to Katie and these students in terms of what happens to this petition.
Thank you, yeah, thank you, Mayor. She, Mayor Bertland alerted me to the petition you were going to mention, and one of the things that you may not be aware of is that the school district is required to have a transportation demand management plan. And so because it's the actual school causing the demand for the parking, the school has to address the parking. So certainly, one option is to, I think, we'll of course do this. Kirsten Taylor, our Assistant City Manager, if she can talk with you offline, Katie, we can provide you that plan. And we're happy to work with the school district in looking at this. But one of the things with any development in our city that we would be very concerned about is the impact of that development, just like the school. We would be very concerned about how that development is impacting nearby neighbors. And so I think our interest is to not have a adverse impact on our neighborhood, but certainly, we are willing to facilitate and have a conversation with the school district and see where that might go. So before you leave, if I can ask Kirsten to meet with you, and she can explain with some more of the process and some of the things we envision doing. Of course, I promise to come back to the council and let you know what happens with that. It's one of the things that you'll learn with democracy is nothing happens fast. So it's a lot of process, and if you can be patient, and how many more months do you have before you, okay, maybe. But if you can be patient, we can certainly work with the district and cooperate with them and see if there's some solution.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here for public appearances? Seeing none, appearances are now closed. The next item of business is the consent calendar, which contains payable reports and payroll reports. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented?
Second.
Great. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none, motion passes and the consent calendar is approved. Our school has a total of six parking lots and are only four designated to students. Among those four parking lots, one of them contains around five parking spots, and another contains around 10. There are only two sufficient lots that are available to upperclassmen who have to pay $75 a semester. With over 700 upperclassmen in our school, there needs to be more parking provided. For students who have the inability to pay for this, it forces them to park on the only street available, which creates inequality within our school. With our school's mission to construct an atmosphere with equality, we need open street parking to move us in the right direction. When I got my license sophomore year, I was ready to drive to school, but parking was an apparent problem. Seniors are granted parking in the lots if they pay, so I was forced to park on the long street by St. Monica's, often referred to as the Strip. But luckily, I have a friend who had allowed me to park in her driveway. Unfortunately, most people at this school do not have this luxury. Rather than having assigned parking, underclassmen have to park on the Strip, which is far away from the school and holds limited spots. This poses many problems, including students who need to leave during the day for running start or private classes will no longer have parking when they come back. As well as, students who live off-island are forced to take long bus rides because they are not guaranteed parking on the Strip. Oftentimes, parents cannot drive students to school due to distance or work schedules, making students take longer bus rides, compromising their time. And students who have after-school tutoring activities or sports need transportation to and from the high school after their commitment when buses have already left the school. So many students need to drive to school due to after-school activities, so rather than increase bus activity, we should open up street parking for students. As you can see, this affects a different- a ton of different types of students, which is why I've started a petition and received 597 signatures from students and parents that support the action to remove the "No Parking During School Hours" signs on the streets. Next year, I will be off at college, but I hope that MIHS students will receive open street parking. If you can remove the street signs, it would provide more parking, less traffic, and a result in equality and justice for us students. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Because Katie is here, and she's representing such a significant number of high school students, the city manager and I had a discussion and thought it would be helpful if Julie went ahead and responded to Katie and these students in terms of what happens to this petition.
Thank you, yeah, thank you, Mayor. She- Mayor Bertland alerted me to the petition you were going to mention. And one of the things that you may not be aware of is that the school district is required to have a transportation demand management plan. And so because it's the actual school causing the demand for the parking, the school has to address the parking. So certainly, one option is to, I think, we'll, of course, do this. Kirsten Taylor, our Assistant City Manager, if she can talk with you offline, Katie, we can provide you that plan. And we're happy to work with the school district in looking at this. But one of the things with any development in our city that we would be very concerned about is the impact of that development, just like the school. We would be very concerned about how that development is impacting nearby neighbors. And so I think our interest is to not have a adverse impact on our neighborhood, but certainly, we are willing to facilitate and have a conversation with the school district and see where that might go. So before you leave, if I can ask Kirsten to meet with you, and she can explain with you some more of the process and some of the things we envision doing. Of course, I promise to come back to the council and let you know what happens with that. It's one of the things that you'll learn with democracy is nothing happens fast. So it's a lot of process, and if you can be patient and- How many more months do you have before you- okay, maybe. But if you can be patient, we can certainly work with the district and cooperate with them and see if there's some solution.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here for public appearances? Seeing none, appearances are now closed. The next item of business is the consent calendar, which contains payable reports and payroll reports. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented?
Second.
Great. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none, motion passes and the consent calendar is approved. We now move to regular business, and the first item of business is Agenda Bill 5397, Thrift Shop Staffing Transition. And for that, we welcome Youth and Family Services Director Cindy Goodwin.
Good evening, members of the council. Cindy Goodwin, YFS Director. I'm here to speak about Agenda Bill 5397, asking you to authorize expenditures to expand thrift shop staffing transition to stabilize revenues and hopefully to grow revenues. I'm going to speak just a bit about, go over the revenue history for the thrift shop, show kind of how it's grown over the years, some of the factors that have contributed to that, and then look at the budget implications for this move. Share that with you. So this is the revenue history, a picture of the revenue history. And as you can see, it began in 1975. It was a rummage sale. The first year, sales were 3,450. And we ended last year at just over 1.6 million, 2017. You can see in 1999, that was when we remodeled. So there are some plateaus and there's some growth. And I want to go over that because that's relevant to what we're doing now, which is taking a look at our staffing and when we do well with revenues and what are some of the barriers to that. So during this time, I just want to make a couple of things that remain consistent. Consistent is outreach to get volunteers to come into the shop and outreach to universities, get work-study students. So we're pretty aggressive about that. We have a whole plan for outreach, so that's remained consistent. So as you look at that, that's remained consistent, but our results in those areas have not been consistent. So I'm first going to have you take a look at 2003. Prior to 2003, and prior to even a little bit before, 1996, there was only volunteer coordinator- there were only volunteers. We hired the first volunteer coordinator in 1996. So up until 2003, there was a coordinator, many, many volunteers, and they were open four days a week. When you come up to 2003, we have a- back in 2003, that's okay. The assistant coordinator was brought on. That person went, became full-time in 2006. We have 12 work-study students. So in 2003, we have 12 work-study students. We've just put in place a POS. I'm forgetting what it stands for. POS, Point-of-sale, thank you, Point-of-sale System, so we can take credit cards. And we're seeing a steady climb. And the apparel lead goes full-time in 2006. And again, we still have split days, two, four days, they're split. So we come to 2007, which is up there currently. We have a coordinator, assistant coordinator, and we have 12 work-study students. At this point, we're just before the Great Recession, so we're doing fine. We will take a small dip. At this point, Suzanne's doing a lot of research into how you can grow the thrift industry. She's talking with people, she does- she's taken trips. She's spoken with Kent Alterman, Head of Value Village. She's looking at research, so really thinking about how can you grow- how can you grow the shop. And I want to move us to 2009, to 2012, this one period here. This was really a period of rapid growth. You can see it going up. We have a lot of work-study students. We began advertising in the Seattle Weekly. We have a 7:00 AM shift come in. We've moved to having- we've increased the amount of days. We have people starting very early so that we can get goods onto the floor. Really, what can drive your business is getting goods from the donation onto the shelves. We opened six days a week in 2011, and we were really trying to reduce the steps from donation to shelf. We had- in 2009, we had 17 work-study students. In 2011, we had 23, and 2018. And this was the period of the most active growth for the thrift shop. I'm going to take you to the next period, which is 2013 to 2016. This is where we saw the revenue growth was steady, but it was slowed down. And a lot of things were factored into this. We lost a lot of state and national work-study. People, students did throughout King County, throughout the state, throughout the area. We had staff in, fill in for their work. Work became more fragmented. We were losing volunteers for a couple of years there as a lot of the people that began the thrift shop either needed to leave because they were aging out or they were passing away. So our volunteer corps was changing. We saw a change from people who had did 20, 30 hours a week to people who did a shift or two a week. But it was very different, and it was a different kind of commitment to the store. They were wonderful volunteers, but the amount of time and the amount of knowledge, I left- left with a lot of volunteers. So we have- we have this period, we have steady growth, but we also have the challenges of losing work-study, losing volunteers, and really filling in a lot for people. In 2015, we did our first transition to having paid staff. We weren't able to get the work-study students that we wanted, so we used the casual wages, put it together, and got a 29-hour-a-week apparel person. And then again, in 2016, that was the last time we came with you, and that was when we asked the foundation to fund a pilot project for another 29.5-hour person to help in, I believe it was soft goods. Because we were beginning to recognize that we could work on all of the aspects that you need to grow business, such as social media, advertising, really building a base, streamlining every process in the store and using people well. But if it was fragmented and you didn't have people there, you're constantly taking your coordinators and putting them on the cashier to make things go. So we really saw prices stagnate. And if you took it, if you take a look at '16 to '17, when we did those two adjustments, you can really see how we started picking up again in revenues. So that's some of the thought process that went into this Agenda Bill. I remember speaking, Suzanne Logan and I, the two coordinators for the thrift shop, started talking about three years ago, when stress was very high and when we were losing volunteers. And there was a couple of years there where we didn't make what we really were projected to. And talking with Chip quite a bit about it. And that's when we developed the plan. If we need to have a staffing corps that will allow us to stabilize and grow, what is it? So what we're presenting tonight and requesting funds for represents that step in doing that. And we're asking for, the Agenda Bill asks for, a position to go from three-quarters time to full-time, and then another full-time position. And we're hoping that this will, actually, we've projected that this will allow us to use volunteers and work-study effectively. But if there's any upset, and there will be in that, that's just a natural part of doing business, that that won't affect revenues, and we won't see so much variability in what we're able to reduce and get out in the store. I'm going to take you now to our revenue projections, because that's quite important. So we did, Suzanne really worked this up with Chip. We talked about if we were to put this in 2018, what that would look like. So for the first year in 2018, we are, we're hoping to see an 8% increase in revenues. And from there on out, this chart, when we talk about it, it is 5% per year revenue growth. So as you can see, we have revenue, expenses, and net for the next five years. And then we've included, what is that, the expense ratio? And then what are your expenses? Expenses for the thrift shop are approximately 3.8 per year. I was fairly prudent, that along with the revenue estimates. And then the net change is the bottom line. Where you can see how we steadily increase what we're able to bring in. So we're hoping that this proposed change, that we're requesting you to authorize funds, will really put us on the track of being a stable thrift shop and allow us to think, how can we grow it? We still think that with this square footage and the amount of donations that we get and the goodwill from the community, that we have the Suzanne's ability to continue to grow the thrift shop. So with that, I would like to answer any questions or see if I can clear anything for you.
Counsel, are there any questions? Benson?
Thank you, Cindy. You know, the one question I have, and I shared that with you earlier, was simply, I know that you're talking about a five-month trial, and then during this period of time, you're going to be monitoring things. And there was something in the Agenda Bill where you talk about making some sort of staffing adjustments, perhaps, depending on what the revenue projections are. And I guess I want you to elaborate on what process you guys will actually take in order to monitor the revenues so that these projections actually, you know, either are going to be overly optimistic. If they are overly optimistic, I want to know what steps can be done and when you guys envision taking those steps. Because, you know, frankly, you know, we've been going through this whole process regarding the financial challenges. And so I'm sure people are taking a look and saying, gee, just adding another 1.5 FTE. And so I guess I need to know, you've explained the justification for it. I just need to know what happens if things don't come out as you project.
Yep. Yeah, I'd be really happy. So I'm going to have Suzanne explain what kind of monitoring we do and what kind of reports we write. And to, just to clarify, when we made the calculations, these, the thrift shop pays for its expenses all the time, which means it pays for its own staffing. And then what is above that is what goes to the department. But I really want Suzanne to fill you in on how they do reports. And because we monitor by department. We monitor by sporting goods, by soft goods, by jewelry. So I'd like to have her do it, because we look at them weekly, so we can see what's happening. And she really looks at where the staff is. One, for immediate feedback for all of us and for the staff. But I'm going to let Suzanne give you an idea of how that's done.
Thank you, Cindy. Suzanne Colleen of the thrift store. The thrift store, our weekly report process, we look at both production, which is how much inventory is going through the store and onto the floor, and sales. And it is monitored at a higher level and also at a lower level so that each work group can see the fruits of their efforts. Now, what we see when it comes to production projections is when there aren't available volunteers or staff, then that department suffers. And so this is where we're trying to fill in. And definitely, you know, when we have great attendance and everybody is participating, the numbers go up. So production is a very important part of sales for the thrift store. So watching this on a weekly basis, we're always able to shift to make sure that we're either monitoring some sort of performance issue or quality issue or pricing issue. There are different things to adjust, so we look at that very closely.
Wendy?
So, love your thrift store. Thank you for everything you do. And every time I walk in there, there's a different display, so your staff are really busy. And I know a lot of people use a thrift store. Tell me what would happen if we didn't do that extra FTE? If we could only do, you know, the three-quarter person up to full-time and just sort of wait and see how the next few months play out, given the CAG issues and the sensitivity to what we're doing with staffing?
Yeah, I can speak to that. So we have some natural hills and valleys at the thrift store in participation. Our work-study students are just about to hit their finals. And so what that means is they're going to be working less, and often they're sick because they're staying up late and studying. So April and May are historically months where there's a lot of opportunity, where our performance has been low in the past. And what we want to do is bring our performance up so that we can keep the store looking good. So I wouldn't recommend waiting. I think that there's a lot of opportunity to gain in sales, and we want to keep our business consistent. And ultimately, you know, we need to keep impressing those customers. If there's good product on the shelf, that we have good customer service, that all needs to be in place.
If I can add to that, Wendy, I think if we were just to do one, I think we'd see some stabilization. I don't think we'd see it to the degree that we want. So I think we'd still continue to have staff that are, that can't make meetings, that are pulled on to go cashier when they are there, that we would still see revenues not grow. I think that that's what would happen. And, you know, this is a numbers game. It's really where we're trying to make the best estimate of, how much can you put in and get the most out but not go over? And so this 1.25 was our estimate for stabilizing and giving us a chance to see how we could grow.
Bruce, and then Dave?
For Suzanne, you, this, to the beginners, or the stupid question, but you said we monitor production closely, but can you help me understand what production is? Is that on an employee basis that you're looking at? Just help me understand what is actually happening.
So we are currently looking at production on a department-wide basis. We have an understanding of how many hours are put into departments. Production is taking inventory that is coming through the door, and it's put into the point-of-sale system as inventory. And that represents potential sales on the sales floor. So really, what we're looking in the thrift industry is to produce two items to sell one. That is pretty typical, so not everything sells through. Our sell-through is actually higher than industry standard. It's about, we're producing one and a half items to sell one. So does that clearly answer your question?
Well, I guess, sort of go the next step in terms of, so what would a report look like, I guess, at the end of a week? What would be the points in that report?
Sure. So a report, which you can do daily, weekly, or monthly, shows how many pieces of inventory went into the store, what the average price is, and what the total value of the inventory is.
Is it into the store or onto the floor?
Onto the floor.
Okay. Because I think there's a fair amount that gets diverted.
Yeah. So, yeah, reports do not reflect any kind of diversion. That's on a separate report.
Thank you. That helps.
Dave?
So this is probably a Suzanne question. And I think that the thrift store is our one sort of secret weapon in terms of funding for Youth and Family Services. So I'd love to see how we can help bolster that. So we're lucky as a business to have a zero cost of inventory because all the things are donated. But we have, we really do have a cost of goods sold still because you have employee time and light bills and all of the things that associate with that. And do we, do we know for every, you do know, I just don't know, for every dollar that we sell, what is the, what is our average cost for that dollar? Like, so I'm trying to calculate profit margin. It's hard because we don't have a true, you know, this widget costs $3 and we sold it for $8. But that's a question, and are there opportunities to change that profit margin at the same time that we're accelerating revenue? Sorry, that was a compound question. Hopefully it makes sense.
So I think down on the expenses to revenue line, you'll see that where we land, right at about 44% expenses to our revenue. At the thrift store's highest productivity, when we had the highest level of volunteers and the most work-study students, we were at about 38%. So that isn't a vast change compared to other thrift industry stores. I've taken a look at Goodwill's 990 over the years of what they've had available, and their expense ratio runs at about 87%.
Tom? I'm sorry, Dave, you look mystified.
Well, that's just more mystified than Goodwill. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Tom?
Has Chris gone through this proposal? Chris Segal? From HR?
No, it's not at this point that we would probably involve her. At this point, we will when we start to hire.
How long has the donation assistant been a contract employee?
Do you remember, Suzanne?
Donation assistant? That's casual wages.
It's casual wages. It's casual wages, so it's hourly wages.
I'm just curious. This was not my area of expertise, but there are companies that have gotten into trouble from hiring contract labor for prolonged periods of time. And if this is a full-time permanent position, and we're paying them contract wages, I just want to make sure that Chris looked at it because you could get your, we could get ourselves into a situation where somebody would make a ruling that they should be a full-time employee.
Yes. No, you're totally right about that. I think when we move from the on-project or trying something out, we have to do that, and we have to review them regularly with Chris to make sure that we're legitimate. But we would go to her if this is approved to say, this is what we're planning to do, is this right classification? But this is our, I think that we're right in doing this. This is how we brought people on in the past.
I do have a question, but Colleen, if you have something? Okay. So you made, I think, a great comment, which is when there are insufficient volunteers or staff, the productivity declines. And equally, we just had a proclamation about how important and the value of volunteers in our community. We've talked about staff, we've talked a little bit about work-study. But equally, I think, you know, when we're looking at, as you say, sort of a decline in volunteerism, I would also be really interested in, what are we doing to encourage the next generation of volunteers in the thrift store? Because that too, you know, for all that it doesn't necessarily have the same steady and predictable nature as an employee, there is still, you know, a net contribution that those volunteers are making. So where are we going with recruiting new volunteers, the next generation?
So younger volunteers.
Well-
Or just new volunteers?
Yeah.
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 Yeah. We advertise and put out information to list volunteers from communities in a variety of ways, and pretty aggressive about it. Suzanne, do you want to talk about that? Because we, as a department, we list that in our newsletter. With anything that sends out, we say, would you like to get involved? These are the ways that you can get involved. We talk about it. We've also gone to different fairs and to different communities, but I'll let Suzanne speak to it if you have anything you want to add specifically.
So, The Thrift Store has held at a fairly steady average, you know, some years up, some years down, but almost at the same level that we've come in at, which is at about 16,000 hours.
It's hours, okay.
Yes, per year. A large number of those volunteers may be temporary, and so they have a goal of, they want to work three months, they want to work a few hours here, a few hours there. On average, we are onboarding 126 new volunteers per year. So that's background checks, onboarding, putting them into systems, training them, you know, pairing them up, following up with them. So, we're pretty active there.
And how long do they, I mean, and how long do they stay? I mean, is there an attrition with those volunteers?
We have a core of about 60 to 65 regular volunteers that are pretty steady. And so, that extra number of volunteers are, I think we're, I can't tell you what percentage, but we're holding out an average of 65 volunteers that are regular, and probably about 140 participants per year.
Okay. And, I mean, I guess the basic question is, is do you think that there is an opportunity to go and recruit more volunteers to help with this math equation that we have?
I can answer. I think, I think we're open to finding volunteers anywhere we can. We've been incredibly aggressive. We go to every faith community. We ask them to put it in the newsletter. We speak with any community group that we can. Any time there's a fair, we put up information about volunteering. So we try to do it where it's made sense. We would be open to other avenues. We look at, we look at, we've looked at other organizations and how they get volunteers, so we've exhausted that. It's not just, we would always be open to it. We do everything we can to get people on pretty quickly, and we recognize that they're really one of our greatest assets. But, we're sometimes at a loss how to increase any more numbers than we have on the island. Yeah.
Great, thanks. Thanks, Colleen.
So, we're going to meander a little bit, but I'm going to ask you a few questions. Tax changes at the federal level, have you seen any drop in 2018 donations?
Not that we're aware of yet, no.
I'm now going to say, looking at the agenda bill, kind of looking at what you did with the apparel assistant, right? You increased apparel assistance time, you got a 13% increase in revenue off of a department, a soft goods department within the thrift shop, drove $100,000 of revenue. So that touched 46% of your total revenue. It's kind of a proof of concept, by changing from one type of staffing model to another type, which gave you more consistency, you got a higher return on your investment. Right? It was clearly a lot more, it was a multiplier effect on what it costs to take that part-time person and make them more full-time or full-time. What I'm, my point there is that the 13% of revenue was on 46% of the revenue, and now you're talking about 5% on 100% of the revenue, right? So what you have is you have a thrift shop that needs to get product onto the floor to sell it, you have a conversion rate just higher than the industry standard, and so we're talking about giving you the resources to get more onto the floor, which moves the top line, right? The full top line, not just soft goods. Is that correct?
Yes.
So, I have every confidence this is the right move, right? You've proven yourself in the soft goods to a high degree, right? That's an excellent outcome. What I would say is, I'd be more comfortable checking base with you and half the time instead of waiting five, six months to see how did this turn out? Could we check in halfway there?
Yeah, we certainly could. I think we're, we want to be careful that we don't make a quick judgment if it's not, during low months of donation and shopping. We really want to make, this is supposed to even it out during all time, so I think we could. I think, I think we will know. I think we've been, we said five months just to be prudent and give ourselves a time if we have to work out any kinks in how we arrange things, but I think we will know in two to three months.
So then, as I kind of think through that, the capacitive limiter of the thrift shop is the square footage. You're saying, based on the response to one of Benson's questions, which was about duties of the production assistant, pricing product was one of the core duties. And so if pricing the product is a bottleneck in getting things to the floor, this is obviously going to solve that, right?
That's right. We hope that this will get more out.
Eventually, the bottleneck will be the floor, right?
That's right.
And so, do you feel that these FTEs, these additional resources run you into that constraint, or do you still have more headroom?
We have thought about that, and we think that we still have more headroom. Do you want to answer this, Suzanne? We were just talking about this today, because we thought, given our footprint, what do we think is our capacity, what can we earn? Do you want to address that?
Well, we do have more headroom for that. Currently, we're running kind of a half-staffed 7:00 AM shift, so we certainly have a lot of opportunity to turn more product onto the floor. Increasing of advertising also increases customers, but I do believe that we've got a few more years in The Thrift Store where we've got headroom to really maximize our performance and even add additional shifts.
Okay. But, so clearly, that's about moving the product to the floor, but at some point, you'll get very good at that, and the floor will not be big enough to have any more product. It's a good problem to have, right? You have the capacity, so if you can have donations that match the quality that you want to sell, that's great. So, you know, I'll support it. I'd like to see you back earlier. Good job. You know, this is, this is one of the few places the city can generate revenue without taxing all the citizens of the island and do it in a way that goes to a really worthy cause, so, thanks.
Okay, Wendy, and then Benson?
So, we're talking about supply in The Thrift Store. Have you guys given thought to demand and getting more shoppers in? Would that solve this other side of the equation? Because I'm still reluctant on this other headcount, given where we are financially and with staffing levels.
We think about that all the time. I just want to say that.
So, anyone want to talk about bringing more people?
The Thrift Store does have a marketing budget. Our strategy is to market for off-island customers, so we are consistently within The Stranger and other publications, and those do seem to bring in new customers. So, if we're doing our job when they're in, hopefully they're returning customers.
Benson, and then I'm going to encourage a motion. Then Dave?
Just a quick question, and I have also a question for the city attorney. So, as far as reporting, wouldn't you, I mean, it'd be great, you know, do you envision coming back to the council and giving us a report after the five-month trial? Is that, I didn't see that in the agenda bill.
I don't think we said it in the agenda bill. You know, it's interesting, this is more of an internal process. I assume that we would evaluate it and stop it if it doesn't work. That would, we would not want to go over that. That's something that we would just do automatically. I don't know if we'd bring that back here. I think we decided we need to let these people go. I mean, but that's something that you just do operationally. That'd be my take. If that's of interest, we could certainly look at that and see if that's possible.
I think the funding, though, is only...
To the end of the year.
To the end of the year.
Yeah.
And then my quick question to the city attorney, and this is getting back to a council member Akers' question, on the contract position. It's not, my understanding is that we're not talking independent contractor, we're talking, my recollection is that the city has this term when it talks about contract employees, that are actually employees, W-2 employees, but for a designated short period of time. And that's what you guys call contract employees?
That's correct.
So they're still employees?
We call them limited term. Or limited term, they're still getting, usually they get benefits, they get, you know, living wage, that kind of thing.
And I'm sure that Cindy Goodwin can correct me if I'm wrong about this, but they get prorated benefits based on their hours worked.
Yeah. It's a completely benefited position, but by doing contract, it allows us to, at the end of the period, let them go. That it's understood that this is for a certain period of time.
Okay, thanks, Colleen, you wanted to add, and then Dave?
I just wanted to clarify, because we touched on it again, that the reason I wanted you to come back was, I fully expected to be a success story anyway, because it's just the numbers are compelling, and I think, you know, you've thought through it, and those are the results that I think we're going to see. But if we didn't, I don't want to give up on this. There's got to be another idea behind this good idea. And so, if it didn't work out, I don't think we're going to dwell on you coming back and saying it didn't work out, and we let those, you know, we changed our mind, repositioned staff. But I'd like to hear the next good idea, because there's obviously potential there, it's just a matter of getting the right pieces in place. And if it isn't the right move, we need to focus on the next move, but we do need to focus on it.
Absolutely.
Hey, Dave?
Yeah, two quick questions. What is the square footage of the store?
The square footage of the store is about 7,600 square feet.
What's the, do you know the retail portion, would you guess?
We've converted some of our backrooms into retail, so I don't know if I have that figure right on hand, but it's probably about 4,000 square feet.
4,000, okay. And then, doubling down, not surprisingly, on what Debbie said, so interestingly enough, that gives you $432 of sales per square foot with that 4,000, which is higher than the national retail average of every shopping mall in America by about $100 per square foot. So way to go. With that, you got to catch up to Apple, which is $3,800 a square foot. I would love to see us continue to try and figure out the calculus with the volunteer side, because that, that's the one thing that changes that expense to revenue percentage dramatically, right? It's free labor. And some of the numbers that you threw out, that we're onboarding 128 new volunteers a year, get that we have some folks that are students and they have short-term and we're doing that, but if that has been sort of a constant, and the 16,000 hours a year has been a constant for a number of years, it feels like maybe there's something we could do. So however we can help to, you know, inject some, something new into that, I think there's several of us that would love to help, because that feels like, one, just the secret sauce to new profitability, and then it helps you guys stabilize as well.
Counsel, I would love a motion. Tom?
When Benson asked his questions, and the clarification that Attorney Sam provided, I think I misunderstood. So the 1.25 heads that are added, they are not contract personnel, they are full-time employees of the city of Mercer Island?
They are, they will be contracted positions, and they are full-time, and they have full benefits.
Okay.
Yeah.
And that estimate on the cost includes the full benefits?
It does, yeah.
Okay. And then, I love The Thrift Store, I'm down there literally like once a week because I have to buy new sets of dishes and new lamps, because we have some kids at Destroyers every week, so I'm always buying dishes there. And I think it is a gem on the island, so I don't want to do anything that would adversely impact the thrift store, because it is a revenue generator. I am a little worried about adding headcount, just because of the budget crisis that we're under, and I will support this motion, but I want under, is there a sense of urgency to do it now versus in five, like even three months, when we have the opportunity to evaluate what the CAG is bringing back to us and sit down as a council to really look at our overall financial picture?
Is there a sense of urgency? Well, there's a, I think the urgency is just that we're not maximizing and making as many revenues as we can, and we're not stable. So we're exhausting staff, and we're up and down. So, yeah, it needs to be done, you know, I'm just, I'm just wondering, you know, the YFS fund is separate than the Cindy budget, it's not part of the general fund, so I'm not sure that our staff count is counted in the, can you, do you know about that?
Yeah, you are part of the general fund. We do separate the YFS fund for obvious reasons. I think, you know, ultimately, what we're wanting to propose here is a net revenue increase. It's kind of making this investment, you've already done a pilot, our staff's coming back and saying, hey, we, we hit the highest levels we ever hit, right? 1.6 million, and we don't think that's going to stop. We do have challenges with maintaining that inventory, that stock that needs to come in, and processing all that, and would you be willing to really put some more investment there? And we believe it's going to pay off with a net revenue increase. And so, I did want Cindy to take more of a, an approach of, okay, let's do this, but I do want to know, is this working? Because of the financial condition we're in, and so, you know, she's come back and offered, let's examine this, and in fact, I'm thinking we have a budget, I think it's a, one of our quarterly updates in September, so I'm thinking that might be a good time for us to give you an update on how that's going, if that's materializing as we predicted, as we project. So, that might be something we target for. What I wasn't sure about is, naturally, you already have a .75 that you're going to take up to 1. Do you have to recruit for that other 1 FTE? The new additional FTE? And then, are you factoring in recruitment and placement?
We are factoring in some potential movement within our organization.
Okay.
And then, some recruitment on the outside.
Okay. Great.
I'm going to move to appropriate $59,773 to increase the current .75 FTE donation assistant to 1.0 FTE, and add a 1.0 FTE production assistant beginning May 1, 2018, both of which will be funded by corresponding increase of thrift shop sales.
Is there a second?
Second.
Colleen, did you want to speak to this?
You know, I think it's evident, Julie just said it again, that you've done the pilot project, you've proven it's successful. I wish the agenda bill had just focused on that and then said this is concept two, and it did, but it took a little bit of getting to you to get to it. I'm confident we're going to be coming back to this, as Julie said, in September, we're going to be talking about success story. We haven't seen a drop-off in donations, and one of the things that we haven't done as a community is we haven't really rallied to get more donations in there. And we know that the new 1 FTE, the production person, is the key to getting things from the back to the front, pricing out the door. If we can do that and prove it's successful, I think we can do other things as a community without adding headcount to really put the thing on afterburner mode, right? But we're not there yet. I wouldn't do it to you with the organization you have right now. So if we can support this and pass it and come back in September and talk about success, I think that's great.
Any other comments?
And I'll say likewise, in September, if we aren't getting the success we want, I want to be able to have that hard conversation about looking at other options.
I'm just, I'm going to just say briefly, I too will support this. There's very few places in the city where you can add human resources and actually increase your revenue. And I would say arguably maybe The Thrift Store is the only place. So with that, I think we do have a unique opportunity. This isn't necessarily the similar situation to adding headcount in other, in other parts of the city. So while the bottom line might be that our headcount number looks like it's going up equally, let's hope that that revenue generated by The Thrift Store goes up more than disproportionately. So, thanks for, again, bringing some creative ideas forward. You know, to Dave's point, let's look on, look at getting some more volunteers and some even better goods in there, and hopefully, hopefully things keep moving. All right, so with that, counsel, are you ready to take a vote? Great. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none, motion passes 7-0. Thank you. So with that, our next item of regular business is Agenda Bill 5416, Soil Remediation Appropriation Request. Public Works Director Jason Kitten.
Jason Kitten, Public Works Director. We're here tonight to talk about the Soil Remediation Appropriation Request. You may recall that in 1991, three underground storage tanks containing gasoline and diesel fuels were discovered to be leaking up at the E-City Maintenance Shop, contaminating both the soil and the groundwater. Remediation efforts have been going on for many, many years, and they have been slow and costly. When the city was notified in 2005, we hired Goldorn Associates to perform the first round of remediation efforts, including different applications such as air sparring and actual chemical injections at the site, but they've been very, very slow and costly. I'll talk about why that is in just a few minutes. In 2017, or late in 2016, the city was notified by the 955 Southeast 36 property owners, formerly known as the Honeywell Site, to expedite our remediation efforts and develop a new strategy to get a no further action letter from Department of Ecology, which would officially close out this endeavor. officially close out this endeavor. Because it truly has been an endeavor. So just to reference you to the site, on the left is an aerial photo. I apologize, they're pretty small. In the middle, in the middle east, that red dot, that is where the three underground storage tanks were originally located. They were since removed, and one of the first remediation efforts that, or process that we, one of the first processes that we completed was actual soil removal, soil removal at the site. We removed the contaminated soils along with the, with the storage tanks. Unfortunately, history now shows that we didn't get it all. And over a decade later, we still have contaminated soils that have now shifted down gradient. If you look at Figure 2 on the right, I apologize, it's really hard to see, but you can see the topography lines basically move towards the Honeywell Site, and we have a stormwater course or water course there in close proximity as well. We do have high levels of hydrocarbons across both properties, on the city property as well as the former Honeywell Site. They both exceed regulatory requirements. So since we were contacted by the property owners, we've been working with their project team as well with the end goal to receive a no further action letter from Ecology. What's proposed for you tonight is actually what's being proposed for the rest of 2018. So the difference between what we've done at the site with what's being proposed today is that they are installing, they're using a new type of drilling rig that actually allows angled drilling to happen at the site. So it allows a more strategic approach to actually get to the sources or pockets of contamination that are still at the site. Previously, Goldor and their consultant team used direct push boring method, and it didn't allow us, there was resistance, and we couldn't actually get the injection into the site. When we did the previous injections, they took sort of the peanut butter approach. They injected it high up on the site and then just sort of let it meander down the site. This is much more strategic. So what's being proposed is 10 additional wells that allows the injection to happen actually at the wells. So Fairlawn has a geologist on site. They've identified where in the levels of soil that contaminant sits, and we actually strategically inject the site at those locations to start breaking down the hydrocarbons. The way the injections have been described to me, think of like a microbe eaten. So the chemical was in and just starts eating at the contaminants. It can actually be fairly quick in terms of the results, but it'll depend on how many applications, will depend on how quickly we start seeing the levels of the hydrocarbons drop at the site. Following each round of injection, they will perform an analysis of how far the injection spread and how successful it was. So what's being proposed in 2018 is 10 additional wells and two injections. Additional work will likely be required. You saw a range of magnitude for the additional costs. We will propose that in our next round of capital improvement, the capital improvement program. Following, once the site is clean, we do expect anywhere from two to five years of additional monitoring to be required by Department of Ecology. That's standard. So I included the budget description or the budget table that you have in your agenda bill. Officially tonight, we're looking for $282,935 as an appropriation request to finish the 2018 work. The $62,000 that you saw approved in summer of 2016, some of you may recall that in 2014, we actually scaled back our remediation efforts to where we were just doing basically a twice-a-year monitoring report submitted to the agencies as being compliant. There was no active remediation being completed. That was what, those monies that were budgeted there were to come from that and some additional technical work by Fairlawn. The $282,935 is what's needed to actually fully fund the rest of 2018. To date, WCIA has been paying approximately 50% of the costs. However, this next batch of work has not been approved by their executive committee, and we won't know officially if they can contribute 50% of the costs until the end of June. So we're prepared tonight to actually take the full $282,935 because that actually gives us the budget appropriation to spend on the site. So with that, request tonight is to transfer $282,935 from the general fund savings to the equipment rental fund and appropriate that for the soil remediation project.
Salim?
Councilmember Wong did ask to clarify a question, why the equipment rental fund? That's just where the project originated in, and so that's where it's been housed. So it's administrative. Questions?
Salim?
Does, does the success or failure or any part of this impact the city shop renovation project when, and if we get to that?
No, it's outside of where the city shop project would be located. So the city shop project is actually above the maintenance facility on a different part of the site. It's something that Chip and I have talked about and whether or not we include it as part of that expense. That's actually a good thought, and as we develop the CIP piece, we can talk about whether that should be included as part of that or not, to get that.
Wendy?
So thank you for that. How confident are you that WCIA will pay 50%?
Fairly confident. We have a member of the executive committee on our team that can help advocate for us as well. And then Carrie and I both plan on going to the meeting and help doing that. To date, they've been paying 50% and, you know, for the historical part of the project. So fairly confident.
Carrie, did you want to?
Well, I just wanted to add that we are fairly confident, just given the past cost-sharing arrangement between the city and WCIA. Jason and I will, of course, be preparing whatever materials as far as background and supporting documentation they need to hopefully support that recommendation for additional spending authority to have a more accelerated remediation effort at that site. And I don't know if this would be required or not, but I would think that perhaps our city manager might need to recuse herself from that discussion or vote.
Thank you. Dave?
So just looking for a bit of a history lesson, I guessing the last remediation attempt was before your time, our time. It feels like a little bit of the case of we took our car to the mechanic because it pulls to the left, paid him $1,000 and it still pulls to the left. So is there, is there no warranty or guarantee that we had from the last remediation attempt? That's the first question.
No. And you're right, this was, this does predate me. And it's, I mean, as we know, it's been going on for 13 years, and it's definitely time to address this issue.
So given that, and given that they were incomplete, is there anything in the new agreement that we have to sort of prevent that from happening to us again?
There's nothing in the current agreement that prevents that from happening. I would say that we have, as I said, we, we have an environmental consultant on our side. They also have one on their side, that both sides are working together towards the end result of getting the normal, the no formal action letter from Ecology. And I've actually spoken to Ecology about the injections. They have been proven useful elsewhere as well, but it really has to be a strategic approach. And so that's, that's what we're taking with this. And the experts are saying that this will be successful, just as a matter of how many applications do we have to do? The reason, you know, I spoke with Bruce earlier this afternoon, when we, when I first started unearthing this project, I was thinking, oh, we could go through and do another excavation of the contaminated soils. Unfortunately, the site topography, the relevance of the water course, and then obviously how the 955 property is currently being used, we can't just go in and excavate like we want to. And so we're, we're pretty limited on what approach we can actually take, and this seems to be our best course of action.
Wendy?
So, so then what's next? So this is 2018. What's 2019, 2020 look like? Like until we get to the completion and the monitoring, what, what does that timeline look like?
That's a really good question. And so the first injection is scheduled for July. And then what the current plan says is that a month and a week or two after that injection, we'll be able to see how successful we were. So we're coming to you in June with a CIP preview, and then the second injection is scheduled for December. So that, what you're going to see most likely from us in the June CIP preview is a placeholder. And then once that July injection piece takes place and we have some data that we can actually say, okay, this is how successful we were, we'll be able to more fine tune that number and how far out that projection is. It's, they can change the variation of the level of the injection oxidation chemical that goes into the site, and that can obviously speed things up, but it also comes with the cost. So that's one of those pieces that we'll evaluate after the July injection.
Benson?
When the question regarding WCIA was raised, I think you focused on, I think, the cost, potentially recovering 50% of the cost for the 2018. I'm curious about going forward because obviously the total cost is quite, quite a lot more. So do you have a sense as far as the potential recovery from WCIA as to that additional cost?
We don't know. Unfortunately, we don't, we don't know the answer to that. As we identified in the, in the agenda bill, there is a grant program out there that we will definitely explore. It is very competitive. And to be quite honest, we have to have a remediation process and plan in place that Ecology supports. And I can tell you flat out that the remediation efforts that we were doing previously to this new scope of work would not have, would not have met the requirements that forth in that grant program. The injections and actually actively pursuing remediating the site is something that they want to see. They don't want to see a project linger on for 10, 15 years. And so we will explore that, but it's going to be competitive.
But that's, that's with respect to the grant. But as far as getting some sort of assurance from WCIA, what's that process look like?
So historically, the cost-sharing arrangement has been 50-50, and that's in part because WCIA provides coverage for the contamination that's migrated off-site, but not for the contamination on the city's property. The current scope of work, the environmental consultant, Fairlawn, has said that it's very hard right now to try to take that scope of work and delineate it along property boundary lines. So for simplicity's sake, WCIA has continued a 50-50 cost-sharing arrangement. Asking, or trying to respond to your question, asking about how will it be handled prospectively going forward past 2018 into 2019 and beyond? We'll know more about how successful this is, you know, after we get through this year, we can reassess, reevaluate. Hopefully, we will continue the 50-50 cost-sharing going forward. However, if we learn data from this process that supports a different cost-sharing arrangement because we have a better understanding of the location of the contamination and it's perhaps a greater percentage off-site on the Honeywell property, then we would make the case for WCIA taking on a greater share of the costs rather than keeping it at 50-50. So I can't give you a definite answer, and it will continue to be evaluated and assessed, and we'll have more data to hopefully be able to forecast better in the future.
Thank you.
Okay. Bruce?
Jason, you mentioned coming back and a future CIP. Now, we've got a CIP coming up in just a couple of months as part of the biennial budget process. Are you thinking it's this year CIP that you're coming back to us? Or, okay, so you'd be laying out the, the spending plan for the years ahead, even though you really don't have any more data to work with at that point, you're just, you're forecasting?
Right. So we would, yeah, we would forecast our best guess for the June CIP preview, which is scheduled for June 19th. It would essentially be a placeholder for the next four, five, six years within that, you know, projection. And then following the injection results from the July injection, we have a chance to update our CIPs, our CIP projects as they come back to us as we go into the fall, heading into adoption. And so we would, we'd update that project sheet accordingly based off the results and the data that we get from July.
And with that, I'd like to move to approve the transfer of $282,935 from general fund savings to the equipment rental fund with, and appropriate $282,935 for soil remediation.
Second.
Bruce, did you want to speak to this?
I would just say I appreciate the work staff's done to refocus this effort and to do something here that sounds like a development of a plan that has really the best chance of success and is responsive to the concerns of the neighbors as well. So I think this is the right thing for us to be doing, although, of course, we'd rather not be spending money on this, but we have really no choice but to do that.
Benson?
I'm going to support the motion, but I guess, and this problem, it was certainly when I joined the council, Councilmember Grous took me on a tour of the, of the grounds and pointed out all the, all the wells. So it's been ongoing, so it is good that there is a plan to move forward. I have a question. This is actually, I'm sorry, getting back to what Councilmember Wiesentiner asked, and also looking at some of the responses that we got to the questions regarding Goldor. And I'll leave this to the city council, city attorney again. Given the amount of time that has since their performance, I'm not sure, was this technology that we're talking about, the injection, was that something that was done back, back in the day when they were on, working on the project? And is there any chance that this looks like it might be malpractice by that expert? I just don't know. I just got to raise it, you're shaking your head?
Yeah.
And, you know, I understand that it'll be just a matter of experts saying that they did something that was within, I'm just asking the question, so.
Yeah, let me clarify just quickly. So the injections that were performed previously by Goldor, they, they didn't have, they didn't use an angled drilling rig at that point in time. They, they didn't have access to get into these specific pockets. In my opinion, we didn't really have a really good site characterization completed to really truly understand where the contaminants were. They knew they were out there. At the time that the injections were completed, they were relatively new technology at that point in time. So they did, they did inject the site, but it wasn't strategic at specific locations where that contamination was. And so product that was injected may have been, most likely was distributed across that site to areas of the soil that wasn't contaminated. So in other words, we probably spent money on product that didn't do us any net value in specific locations. The difference with this approach is that the angled boring allows us to identify those specific pockets and inject it at that contaminant location. So it's much more strategic than it was done before. Wasn't malpractice, it's just the technology and the methodology has advanced.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Yeah, Debbie?
Yeah, okay.
The, this is, I don't see how we can't do this. It's sort of a responsibility that we have to the environment, so I'm definitely going to support it. But I do have a request for City Manager Underwood. Is there a way, because I just found out about this recently, and granted, I'm a new council member, but is there a way that I can get a list of all of the outstanding liabilities and potential requests for more funding that might occur between now and the end of the year? And the reason why I'm asking it is, you know, we, we just had a request from YFS where they're going to add another head in a quarter, and then there was this liability. I just, there are a lot of what we call, what I call unkunks, unknown unknowns out there. And given our financial pressures, I'd like to have some forecast of what might be coming back to the, the well in the future. No pun intended to the oil tanks, but I just want to, an overview of what liabilities we might have as a council and as a city, and what other requests for funding might come forward. But thank you for bringing this presentation forward, and, and it's something that we have to do.
Are you mainly interested in understanding what are the potential exposures out there that we've already identified?
Yeah, and not just specific to this.
Sure, sure.
Problem, but around the whole island and everything that we're responsible for managing as, as a council and as a city manager. I just would like to have that risk picture out there so I can get my head around what we might need to plan for in the future.
Yeah, I'm familiar, and I'll talk to Carrie about this. Familiar with producing to the council what's called a litigation update memo, classified, classified confidential memo that's, so we can talk about that. That, I know, is that, that's, is that in line with what you're requesting?
Yeah.
Okay.
That, that's one part of it, the liability side from a legal perspective. And then the other side is things that aren't in the budget that might be coming back before the end of the year with a request for council to fund.
Yeah, and we do try to highlight and alert you to things like that on, on the planning Off the top of my head, I'm not sure. So let me consult with Chip and see if there's anything else out there. Typically, you will see a lot of that in your budget adjustment. Yeah, yeah, so you'll, you'll see things come before you lay down in that. So is, would that, is that kind of what you have in mind?
Yeah, just a spreadsheet that would, we can track to and, and see how we're doing for forecasting and, and get a root cause on why.
Okay.
Things might not have been there.
Okay.
All right, council, are we ready to vote? Okay, all in favor? Signified by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Seeing none, motion passes 7-0. Great. So we now move on to other businesses. Are, yep. Sorry, thanks, Jason. You always get the glamorous end spots.
Dirty dirt.
The dirty dirt, yep. Okay, so we're now moving on to other business. Are there any upcoming council member absences to report? Okay. So with that planning schedule, City Manager Underwood?
Yes, council, I want to mention a change on the planning schedule, and hopefully this all continues to fit with your schedule. Recall that we are looking at hosting a joint Planning Commission and City Council meeting. And it looks like the date that works is May 22nd, so I wanted to see with you if that date looks pretty good. So I'm envisioning 5:30 meeting start, we'll have dinner together, and then start the formal meeting around 6 o'clock. And the topic of that meeting will be your critical area ordinance update. I know I floated that date out there and didn't hear too much from you, so.
Is this a school board one?
That's a good question. I'm having a very difficult time scheduling the school board meeting. Originally, the date we were looking at, we had a conflict with one of the council members, and so the other possibility is June, but I have to say, your June is really very, very busy. And so we may be forced to really push that out, I think, until, just, let's have our, I think the next meeting would be, our next scheduled meeting would be October.
Do we have to have all council members there?
Um, no, I mean, it's just, I think customary, we try to have all the council members there, just like all the board members there, so. And I think they, I want to say, after graduation, they kind of leave. They, you know, they're done until, maybe they don't convene again until end of August or September. So we do have this small window of time, which is really May and June, early June. And so I'm just struggling with really trying to find a good date for that. And I, and the reason why I'm advocating that at least we meet with the Planning Commission is they have a very significant work plan item of yours that they need to complete. So that, that one, I think, needs, and I, I, we've reached out to our videographer, and it looks like she would be able to videotape that. I think that's a meeting where we're talking about what the best available science is. We'll have a presentation, and I think that might be something that the whole community might have a great interest in. So we'll make sure we videotape that. But I just was struggling with the school board, so I know Mayor Burtland and I have been talking about it. It's just been very difficult to find a, a meeting time.
I think it's difficult to find a meeting time, and if I understand correctly, everybody's been gone on spring break, so it's kind of generated some additional delays in even being able to, you know, discuss those dates. So you'll report back to us as you get in touch with the superintendent?
I will.
Great. Okay, board appoint, or sorry, Julie, are you done with the planning?
Yeah, that was the one thing I wanted to know. Oh, pardon me. We will have another executive session scheduled on Tuesday, April 24th at 6:00 p.m. for an hour.
For an hour, okay. Tom?
I, I had a question on the planning schedule. On page, um, page six or eight, what, last page, it says other items to be scheduled. And I wasn't clear if it's December 18th that they're going to, at the bottom of this page, if it's pushed out in next year, but the one thing that I think is an easy win for us to get through is the code of ethics. I know it was talked about in 2017, and it's still not scheduled. If I could offer my services to help draft it or something like that to get it in the front end of this year rather than back end, I'd be happy.
It's on my work plan with Carrie, and due to my vacation and also not having a deputy for the last few months, we've had to push a few things, but our goal is to get it done this summer, pretty quick when I get back.
Bruce?
So Julie, I see that we have the TIP upcoming at our May 1st meeting, and while it's not exactly TIP, it does seem to me that we have a closely related issue, which is the, the first and last mile projects, the process we're going through with that. And the, the thought that comes to mind is that perhaps staff at that May 1st meeting could suggest to council, a proposed approach to trying to engage with the council, whether it be a ad hoc subcommittee or in some other fashion, to, to move that whole process forward in a, in some fashion. I know, as again, it's not quite TIP, but rather than have its own agenda built, it felt like it might make sense to, to.
Thanks. And, um.
Put it together for that.
Just so you know, I had a chance to talk with Councilmember Bassett. He alerted me that he was going to mention this with the council. So you really didn't, I think the first time we talked about last and first mile, we kind of provided you a whole host of things that you could look at. It was at your December 5th council meeting. That's, feels like ages ago now. And we talked about how do we get at what we want to do with first and last mile solutions? So I think it's a great question. Right now, we're starting with our Lyft and Uber pilot, but that's a fraction of what you could possibly be doing. So you hadn't really had, discussed it very, I think, concretely on what you wanted to do. So the question that Councilmember Bassett is really proposing is, hey, we still need to figure out what we want to do. We need a plan for this. And he's recommending that we put together a head hot council committee, working with staff on really starting to look at all the possibilities. And there are a lot of possibilities, and I think there's some merit to going down that road, given you only meet twice a month, and, you know, you can get a lot of work done in the ad hoc committee. So we talked about it, and he thought, well, could you carve as part of the TIP, a conversation, a discussion around an ad hoc committee, maybe provide a draft charter of what that would be tasked with, and then identify who, which three council members would serve on that committee? So totally can do that if the council is agreeable.
And I would, I would back up from that just a little bit and say that is one possible approach. My, my end point is really just that I believe this is a body of work that, that the council will want to be engaged in in some fashion, and what I, the way I framed it was, I welcome a staff recommendation on what that engagement should be, with a ad hoc committee being one of the possibilities. But if, if staff feels it's a different structure that works, personally, I'm perfectly happy to, to hear that too, but I think, you know, some, some structure proposal would make sense.
And I think you've heard me, you know, I tend to hesitate on the ad hoc committee because I, I'm so committed to providing all seven of you with the same information, same data, and so that's my hesitation. The other hesitation is my experience with using them in the past, and I think that's been the case here as well, is as a body, you are authorizing your three colleagues to give really advice, you're consulting, and you're trusting those colleagues too, in that when, when the item comes to you for your final adoption and final approval, we're not having to relive the ad hoc committee meetings again, right? That's not efficient, it's not productive. And so I guess that's my only hesitation, but I see a lot of merit in doing that just because we are really approaching uncharted territory here. It's very exciting, and I, and so you have the possibilities of doing some really neat, innovative things, and it probably will require you to, to study it a little bit more, understand it. We would certainly want to use you as a sounding board for some of the ideas that we bring forward, but, but if there's, if there isn't really the, the will of the full body to really put some of this authority onto the ad hoc committee, I would say maybe we should plan on doing some different other process, whether it's having additional study sessions on the off-council meetings, or something which, oh my God, but yeah, we could do that. It's another way to do it, because I am finding that, that study session from 6:00 to 7:00 is a little, that time box is tough sometimes, so we might, so there are different ways to explore it, but I guess those are kind of things that I put out there. But I can tee it up for May 1st if you, if you would like.
Well, I had kind of a broader question, so Bruce and I actually talked about this a little bit, you know, and we were talking about the TIP. I said, I don't know how much of it is actually TIP as, as usual, and how much of it is sound transit? And I wouldn't have even specified that it's first or last mile. There's also the whole mitigation, the traffic mitigation piece, and which kind of at least led me to think, well, what is our strategy for figuring out what it is we need to do, if anything, to mitigate the impacts of all the changes that we've gone through? So whether there's a subcommittee or not for first and last mile, I would also say, you know, how are we going to go about figuring out if and what and how we would spend any mitigation dollars as well? You know, is 40th looking good? Is West Mercer looking good? You know, is, is anything really jumping out at us, and what is the way that we're going to surface that and then process it through staff and council?
Yeah, the first time you'll see that is in the TIP that's presented to you.
So the TIP will include then some of that.
Mm-hmm.
Mitigation piece. Okay, and Salim and then Benson?
So my question is, we had in, somewhere in the agenda, boards and commissions, and we had what felt like some support for mobility or transportation as a board or commission. So I'd like to answer that question before we go down what might be a long road of a subcommittee working on mobility, transportation options, if we haven't had that discussion yet. So I don't know when that teets up.
Mini planning session is the boards and commissions?
So I, you know, to me, it feels like potential conflict of work if we're going to do one, possibly the other gets started on it, and that's problematic.
Ben, sorry, Julie, did you want to?
Mayor, I was just, you, you said it. I mean, I think we were looking at having a deeper conversation around, around the boards and commissions. Do you have the right ones? Do you need other ones at your June mini planning session?
Benson?
Yeah, my only concern, you know, I certainly appreciate what Councilmember Bassett is, is raising. My concern is the impact on staff. I mean, I guess.
I have an answer for that.
Yeah, no, I would want the least impactful way forward. I mean, I just, I am concerned, I mean, we're talking May 1, it is April 17. I mean, I think if an ad hoc committee was formed, I'm sure there's, other council members are willing to step up, but it's a big lift by the staff at this point, so I, I don't know. I defer to you, but I, I'm a little concerned.
And let me just add, I completely agree, and that's in large part why I wasn't proposing an ad hoc committee. I was proposing a staff proposal, our staff thought, and a staff proposal back to council, because I don't want to presuppose what the, what the outcome is.
Well, recall that I am looking at doing an organizational structured change that provides some additional capacity, so no more cost to the city and to the citizens, but it's a, a structure where I, Kirsten becomes a senior project manager, part-time basis, and really, I'm envisioning she could support the council ad hoc committee, and she is largely going to be supporting those sound transit projects.
So what I'm hearing is that there's definitely some room for thought, but the idea being that we would look for a recommendation from staff, you know, how to take this bucket of stuff we've just kind of thrown at you and come back. But I do appreciate Salim's comment insofar as if we're going to have that discussion regarding boards and commissions, et cetera, that it, it's, that it somehow be linked. Again, I don't want to presuppose what that linkage is, but, yeah.
I just want to add that it's, it's a critical juncture for us, because we're talking about balancing staff and maybe having staff resources that can dedicate to this, but I think we all talked about this in the planning session, that we don't have specific experience in staff with transportation issues. We, we used to have a traffic engineer that did this type of work on a kind of consulting, management, higher level, but we don't have that anymore. So again, since we have those resources in the community, and if they're willing to commit to some volunteer service, I want to have that discussion before we start trying to go it alone, which is what we would be doing.
Okay, I want to suggest, Tom, if you have a quick comment, but I, I want to be careful we don't begin to debate the merits of one path or the other at this point, that we do give staff the benefit of some time and good thinking to come back to us with a recommendation. Tom, any final comments?
Yeah, I just, an option would be to go back to where Benson, Wendy and I started on the boards and commissions as an ad hoc committee that was already put in play. We kind of took a left turn with that and kicked it out to the planning session, but if there was a way that we could alleviate some of the pressure on staff and engage people on an as-needed basis, that we could come back to a recommendation, maybe we could look at doing something creative like that.
Okay. All right, planning session, sorry, planning schedule, are we feeling that we are sufficiently there there? Okay, board appointments?
Let me just, I raised a possibility. You've got a bunch of input. I'm not sure how, if it were me, I would take away something from what was said.
Well, my understanding is we were going to have Julie and staff come back with us, to us.
Okay. If I were sitting in your chair, I'd be a little bit befuddled right now about how to be responsive, and so that's all I'm, I'm offering. If, if you feel befuddled, then ask us to hash it more. If you feel like you can somehow finesse your way out of the conflicting input you've got, then by all means do.
Thank you for that. I, I do feel like I'm not clear on exactly what I should be bringing back. I think with that, maybe it really is better to tee this up for your planning session and have a greater conversation around, around this, whether or not it's doing all the different approaches you could do here. Yeah, so, but unless there is support for me to bring back, I think kind of my ideas, but my ideas are probably going to be very different than your ideas, so at the end of the day, I think it needs to be what you want, so.
Well, then, okay, so do we need to spend a couple more minutes on this? Because it, it sounds like there's both a scope question, so what is, what is it that we're trying to wrestle here? And then equally, within what timeframe and potentially what dependencies we have?
Or I can tee it up for talking about this a little bit more with the TIP. I think that might make the most sense. You're going to talk about how to fund the traffic mitigation dollars. We can talk about it then, and we can really, it sounds like you really want to figure out what's our plan for implementing those sound transit dollars. Is that correct?
That's, yeah.
More, more or less.
At the bottom line, that's, that's the important piece here, is how do we develop, you know, a, a plan around maximizing the impact of that money and, and doing something that, or things, would be a lot of things with it that make the most sense. I think Salim's point's excellent, that, that we have said we're going to talk about, you know, this boards and commissions work in, in June, and I think that's, that's really relevant to this. I, I guess, the TIP will be a moment where we will see staff's first pass at how a significant amount of money, I think, will be, will be. amount of money, I think, will be, will be proposed to be spent. And I guess we adopt the TIP, but it can always be changed later.
You adopt it annually.
It does fold into the biennial budget process. So imagine sort of we, we, we a bit adopt without too much churning of that. We then go to the June session and decide what our structure is for working on this. And then that body, whatever it is, begins to do its work, whether it's the full council or a citizen committee or an ad hoc committee or something else. And then that leads to a modification of the expectations of what the spending are. So I think that feels like it could all, that could all work. So I guess I'm comfortable with adopting, you know, adopting the position that Salim's suggesting, which is, let's just sit tight on this, other than recognizing that it's out there as an issue as we're reviewing the TIP at the next meeting.
Okay. Okay. Good. I'm hoping that the communities out there are filling out those applications as we speak. I know many people have actually submitted them, which is great to hear. And otherwise, there are no appointments at this moment. We then move to council member reports. So we'll start with Dave. Bruce?
One thing I want to alert the council to is the One Center City proposals that are going on. I actually have an RTC meeting tomorrow, at which we will be hearing back from staff. At the last meeting, One Center City was a pretty hot topic of discussion, but it came kind of late in the meeting, and so we didn't get very far on it. It's, it's a particularly hot topic for the Northeast cities, because the bus routes coming into Seattle are being changed pretty dramatically. And so they're, rather than buses all the way into Seattle, they're going to be dropped at the University Station is what's proposed. And folks who are coming from that direction are not entirely happy with the, what will amount to an increase in, in travel time for them. I've asked the question, what, what would be the implications for the I-90 buses, which will be pushed out of the D-2 roadway and 550 out of the tunnel? I, I, I've been remiss in not asking that question early. I just actually put it out there earlier today. And if I get answers tomorrow, I'll be, I'll be impressed that they were so quick about it. But I'll be trying to seek answers over the coming days and weeks to, to know more about that, and I'll report it back to the council.
Also ask if, get a confirmation on the, is the Bellevue Way one lane each direction? As part of the light rail stuff, too, because I don't know if it comes up in that form or not, but...
Wouldn't, that's a part of the, so RTC has oversight for Metro. Bellevue Way is a, is really a sound transit task or project, so it would be a different...
I thought buses use that road as well.
They do.
Okay.
And it's, it's a good question. I, I'm not sure I can get an answer from Metro on that.
Maybe Kirsten? Because if those are the type of questions you'll be continuing to work on?
The one other thing I'll bring up is, so I, I'm now sitting on the SEA Board of Directors, and we're, we're meeting tomorrow as well. The question has been asked, and I've asked it of, of Julie and Debbie, but I haven't asked of the, the larger council. What they're wrestling with at the moment is, is there, particularly within the area of homelessness, any particular aspect of that challenge that the cities would like to see the organization really push on in the coming year? And I've offered back a little bit of feedback, because the, this open table group has developed a very long list of possible actions, but the, the list is sort of overwhelmingly long. And what I offered back to them was, what, what we were asked to do first was, are there any things that you think would be non-starters in your community? That seemed like a simpler starting point than what do you think should be the thing? And the one thing I offered back was, one of the points was, cities should be offering parkland for low-cost housing. And I offered back that that was probably a non-starter in our community. So, but beyond that, I, I would welcome feedback from any of you, particularly this evening, in advance of my meeting tomorrow, around this issue and, and any things that you see as the particular points of engagement opportunity for, for a city like ours. And then finally, I have signed up to go to the, several people recommended this, and I went ahead and signed up at the, Seattle Metropolitan Chamber of Commerce does annual trips to other cities, and I've signed up for their Denver trip, which is upcoming in a week. I was told that this is a very good opportunity to network with the others who are going. Dow's going, Fred's going, Dave Summers is going from Snohomish County, and quite a number of other folks. And so I've signed up for that. And that's it.
Great. Salim? Julie Benson?
Yeah, just a couple of things. Last week, I guess, Ross, Deputy Mayor Nice, I think, Councilmember Liker, Councilmember Bassett, and I went to this Go Green Conference, and it was well-attended. I would just say that it was a, a panel of mayors, and it was very interesting. And not that we should ever pat ourselves on the back, but I was encouraged by a lot of the things that they said, that their cities were doing, frankly, that Mercer Island has already done or has already started. And so I think we're doing a lot of the things locally, but of course, there's more to do. But that was actually very encouraging, and it was good to learn what other cities are doing. I will say that, at the last Public Issues Committee, we talked a little bit about the veteran, I have to get it right, the Veterans Seniors and Human Services Levy, and SEA and PIC in particular are asking for SEA member cities to provide input regarding the implementation plan that Dow is developing, and with the King County Council, basically how to implement this levy. So I, I'll, the packet is online. I don't know, I'll send something, a note to our city manager. I'm not sure if there's a individual or department in the city that would want to basically submit comments. I'll send it to Cindy. Okay. So that was basically it. And so, anyway, thank you.
Great. Tom?
Hi.
Wendy?
So first, Bruce, thanks for those updates. And I would ask if you could send something an email, so I can think about it before I respond on the spot. Saturday's Leap for Green event was awesome. Kudos to Ross and staff, everyone who pulled that together. Despite the rain, there was a good turnout and lots of great fun to be had. And then for the you guys, the 24th is the Breakfast for the Schools Foundation. Hope everyone's coming. And then on the 26th, the East Side King County Chambers Coalition is honoring Judy Cliveran from 4:00 to 7:00 at UW-Bowthel. I think several of us are already going. I know organizers would love to see all seven of us there to thank her for her decades of service.
Great. Thank you. Just from my side, again, Leap for Green was great. Got a priceless picture of Benson on an e-bike. Sorry, anybody who wants to see that, happy to share. Coming up at the next ETP meeting, we'll actually have Representative Cliveran, and she'll be speaking for the entire time. The, the entity, the organization there really would like to get her best ideas and thoughts about what the East Side should be prioritizing from its transportation initiatives in the coming session, so that should be interesting. And then I'm frantically trying to find the name of the meeting that will be taking place at the Community Center, not this Friday, but a week from Friday, where it's a conversation about what we're going to be doing with our waste situation, the recycle, et cetera. So I apologize. I think all council members probably did see that, but given everything that's going on with our recycling, et cetera, Julie, did you just want to comment at all?
Yes, thank you. I know Ross will be attending that event.
I'll be there as well.
Staff member, so, right. You know, China's change and their practices has really made an impact on our recycling. So we're looking at potentially doing a study session with the council, maybe this September, October timeframe, to understand what, what does this mean? I know our provider just says, hey, let's just remind our, our residents, remember we're, we have a very high recycling rate. Just remind them to clean out their products, and the, the more clean the product is, just the better it is. So that's a nice reminder, but...
Great. Well, if there's nothing more, we are adjourned just before 9 o'clock.